Can you see from over there? Wow, you've got eyes.
You are a dad. Okay, I called the July 25, 2022 meeting to order. It is 6:01. And all members are here except for Councilmember Newman. So we are ready to go and we'll head right off into regular business, the YMCA annual update presentation. And we have two YMCA people right here. Oh, sure, Charlie. All right. Thank you all for having us here. We appreciate your time. I thought we'd give you a quick update on what's happening at the Y. So, all right, here goes technology. All right. So up on the screen here, you'll see our current membership. So just wanted to tell the story a little bit about membership at the Y. As with all things COVID, we're on the journey to recovery and we're making our way there. So it took a little bit of dip last year. You can see when masks became reinforced back in midsummer where we dipped back down and then kind of held that back until the beginning of the year. But excited to show that come June of 20, you know, well, last month's data, our membership is doing well. We're climbing. What I love to see most personally is the youth memberships. The Y is the place to be for kids and we want to make sure that that continues to stay that way. We also have been really happy with the young adults that we've had. While we're not at pre-pandemic membership numbers for young adults, it's really neat to see our weight room and our fitness floors full of those 20-somethings. Because we know they have a choice to be elsewhere, right? They can go to just a gym, but they're choosing the Y to be at. And so we have really enjoyed capitalizing on them and getting to learn from their experiences. So I think what's also really exciting to see is we are also able to offer more financial assistance now. So as the need gets higher in membership, so does financial assistance. And so working hard to continue to raise that money, but also give it out, make sure that people can be at the Y who need to be at the Y. And then our usage. I, I looked at this usage. I was like, oh, it is a lot busier. It's not just my imagination or the things that, the extra things we're doing. We truly have really picked up in our usage and so we're excited to continue to watch our membership grow. We have some plans for the fall to do some promotions where if they join in September, they'll get December free and just trying to drive membership, membership usage. So we're proud. Yes, ma'am.
So what is the percent of the financial aid that you're giving out now?
Um, at the end of June, it was 11.2, 11.2. So, pretty good.
That's good.
Yeah.
Thanks.
You're welcome. All right. Oh, there it goes. Okay, there's the magic right above your head. All right. So just some programs I really wanted to highlight that the Y is doing. What has been so interesting about our recovery from the pandemic has been the amount of active older adults that have come back. So that's categorized as the 55-plus. They've been with us since we reopened our doors and have really wanted to have more. So we currently have the knitting group that happens weekly, coffee talk that happens weekly, the hiking group that is meeting weekly through the summer, and then group exercise programs. Our active older adults make up over half of the group exercise programs that we have offered. And so when I think about the seniors and our communities and that they're choosing the Y as their place to be and to socialize, and I think they missed out on so much of that while we were shut down, that it's great to see the support back in the Y. And then our, I'm extra happy that we have been able to reopen to our community support. So the shower program relaunched at our center back in June. We've seen 27 unique individuals have visited our shower program over the last two months. Most of them, we see multiple times a week, but there have been the few here and there that are just sporadic. So that happens Monday through Friday, 6:00 to 8:00 a.m., open to anybody. We also knew to our current program is we offer towels and toiletries to anybody who comes in. And so just trying to take it one step further and meet them where they're at. We are also excited to have our family vouchers back, so offering three-month vouchers, which we'll dive into here in a little bit, as well as our senior citizen vouchers. Most excited, I think, for our staff is the Buena Vita Program, which will relaunch in the fall. This is aimed to serve our low-income Hispanic families in the community. They'll get a three-month membership along with culinary classes that teach them how to cook their traditional meals with a little bit healthier ingredients in it. They also will get swim lessons because we know that's a population that often doesn't have access to swim lessons. And then physical activity support, whether that is being set up on a fitness program or taking a class, wherever that might be. And we're also offering refugee support. So currently, we're seeing a lot of our friends who are experiencing difficulties, right? So been able to offer some of them vouchers as a place to go. And I had shared the story with some of you that we had a family come in who, from Ukraine, who was in tears when we offered them a voucher for three months because this place was like Disneyland for their kids. And so thought, gosh, something what is so simple to us as a membership is Disneyland to these kiddos. And they use it. They are there all the time. They, the staff know them. They wave. It's, it's really cool. So to be able to do that is huge. And then working with Carmen and the city to continue to offer quarterly guest passes. In fact, Carmen and I just talked about making sure that residents know that's available this week as we face some warmer temps. And we've got AC and a nicely temped pool. So come visit us if you want to escape the heat. Yes.
So are you still giving vouchers to foster families?
Yes. Yeah, still serving the foster families. Yeah.
On the quarterly pass, can, how do you get that? Can you just come to the desk and say you would like to use your one, your quarterly pass, guest pass?
Yep. They can come and say, I'm a resident of Sumner. Can I use my quarterly guest pass?
Okay, so there doesn't have to be anything ahead of time. And I know Carmen kind of printed a thing that kind of looked like it, but you're just saying verbally as well, establish it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. I would just want to interrupt to let everybody know that Councilmember Newman has joined us. All right. So programs at the Y, programs are so important to our Y, especially to the Gordon Y. We know that that's what drives much of our usage. So these are program numbers from the end of spring. We didn't have final summer numbers. But as you can see, these are not, these are not pre-pandemic numbers, but we are getting there. Swim lessons, just shy of 1,200. Dance, almost 300 kids in dance. And what was exciting about that was we held our first formal recital back in June at Bonnie Lake Performing Arts Center. And it was so cute. I mean, little kids in tutus. How can you not think that's precious? Even if they're not doing what they're supposed to, they're darn cute. So, um, yeah, we were excited. We had almost 1,000 audience members. Lots of families, community members just coming to enjoy. Our oldest dancer was 66. First time ever performing on stage. She had always wanted to dance, so she did it. So I think that speaks a lot to Y programming. You know, you can be at any level and, and we want you to be a part of it. And so we're excited. Registration was today for our next session and our swim lesson numbers are looking really good, which is important to us with being close to water. We want kids to learn to swim. So we're excited. Summer day camp is happening. If you drive by the Y, you'll probably hear them. With, roll your windows down, you'll hear their hollering. But we are in week six, seven, week seven of summer day camp. East Pierce Fire came out last week to show off the fire engine, which was, of course, quite the event. Lots of excited kids. But we've been really enjoying, kids, we're averaging about 220 kids a week. And I'll show you the breakdown here. So what has been interesting is where the need is, has changed slightly. So in years past, we have known that the five-to-eight-year-old camps were popular, but they haven't had the popularity that they have this year. And a lot of those kids are kids who have missed out on some school years. A lot of kids are in camp. A lot of five- and six-year-olds are in camp this year with the reasoning behind, we need them to get ready to go to school, to be away from the caregiver for the day with different adults. So it's been interesting to watch camp evolve through the summer. What I am most thrilled with is our CIT program, which is our counselors in training. Those are volunteers who support camp through the week, our young adults. And our goal is that we turn them into camp counselors when they are of age to work. And so we have one current counselor who started with us as a young 10-year-old a couple of years ago, and now is serving in the counselor role. And so, but we are busy. They get to swim once a week. This week, they're swimming lots of times a week and they are provided a lunch as part of their camp. So as we know, some of these kids, this might be the best meal that they get during the day. And so really trying to make sure they have a healthy meal and get lots of activity and, and send them home tired for the family. So that's kind of the highlight of the Y. That's where we're at right now. Did I miss anything?
Very good. I, I would like to say a couple of things, if it's okay, Jase. First of all, you know, I just, it would be remiss of me not to acknowledge the partnership with the City of Sumner. Amazing that the success of a Y is in the partnership with the community. The strongest Ys represent, and without the council and leadership from the city, this Y would not have happened, nor would it continue to be a success. So I celebrate that. It's great for me to come in and just say that. I texted Michelle LaRue before I came in today, and she, you know, was very vested in this community and that process. So I see Barb and Cindy, and I remember them leading the way with the flag to make sure this is built. What's really great is the arts program continues to flourish and be a great, you know, Jenna, we've mentioned the recital, but it goes deeper. That beautiful art center that's open to the community is great. It has been a tough time for the Y. This, we had a great, I, I look at Andrea and Jason and they helped make this possible, but we're excited about having outdoor space instead of, so next year or the, you know, to be able to say, instead of being on asphalt, it'll be on beautiful grass and, or maybe even turf if we can make it happen. But that's a really big project. And again, Jason and Andrea worked with us through a tough time for the Y. We were shut down for six months, all our centers, which is 90-something percent of our revenue, but we still continue to serve the community. And I'm proud of that. You know, we did have shower programs across two counties. We had 37 employees for a while, from 2,300 to 37, when we had to really close down what we've been building back. And we're at about 72% of what we were. From a membership standpoint, I think revenue a little bit down. We're about 65% of our revenue what we were. But we have 5,000 kids and I've talked to a lot of staff and a lot of school officials. They look at kids and they say the lost year. Kids lost a year in their development and our programs are helping these kids back. And going to day camp and you see these kids, they have, it's interesting because they, there's different development, these kids. And they point to like transition year, kids who are going from elementary to middle or middle to high school. That's where it shows up most. So having the experience at day camp is a big deal. So I just want to say, Jason, Andrea, thank you and thank the council for your support of this Y because you make it a great Y. So thanks.
Thank you guys for all you do.
Thank you.
Twice. Okay, so I guess we will move on to the YMCA service agreements and I will call on Andrea.
So that's a perfect transition into the second topic on tonight's agenda, which are two modifications to the service agreements that we have with the YMCA. So the first is back from 2013 when the facility was built out. You will all recall that the city made a monetary contribution to the YMCA in the amount of $5 million. In exchange for that money and some other in-kind work, the YMCA committed to 10 years of community services in order to, to pay the city for that, that contribution. COVID took a huge toll on the Y's ability to meet those service levels. And so what we're doing for the 2013 services agreement is a really simple two-year extension to the term in acknowledgement of the fact that the services are building back up, that the YMCA intends to meet the original deal, but they need two additional years to do that in order to actually compensate the city. So the, the first agreement is pretty cut and dry. It's two-year extension to the term, but I will pause and answer questions before I move on to the next one. That, oh, Councilmember Newman.
Councilmember Newman.
Yeah, thank you. I was wondering if swim lessons, I couldn't tell if I heard that swim lessons was still part of it. And I was wondering about how any of these services are advertised, like say even for refugee, you know, memberships or, you know, three months, so how any of those vouchers are made known to the community?
So I can speak really quickly to the quarterly vouchers through the city. The most recent newsletter, I believe, mentioned it. And so everyone with a mailing address in the City of Sumner would have received notice of that particular service. But I'll turn it over to the two of you to speak to how you advertise the other programs.
For the three-month vouchers, we work with the family center and the school district. So families are referred to us through the family center. Or if somebody comes in and expresses a need that is close to alignment with what the family center does, then we issue them that way.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Newman, we'll get, we'll get into the other services as part of the discussion on the 2019 service agreement, the Councilmember.
Councilmember Cole.
So I'm curious, would someone has qualifies for an initial voucher for the three, three months, can they also qualify again, like the, the next three-month period?
Yes, when their three months comes up, we have a conversation with them, check in to see where they're at and if it's an extension of the three-month voucher or if they're in a different place and maybe need to apply for financial assistance. Usually just take it case by case. We don't have a hard and fast on, on how it goes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So then fast forward to 2019 and the city owned a vacant parcel of property north of the current YMCA facility. And as part of working with the YMCA and looking to the future and expansion of outdoor ball fields and playfields, the city worked out an arrangement with the YMCA to convey that vacant parcel to them in exchange for services in return. The purchase price of the property was $700,000. Originally, the city entered into a services agreement for that total amount. But after COVID and we've met and we've discussed on a couple of different occasions, the YMCA actually prefers to put a chunk of money down now in advance, $250,000. And then we revised the services slightly to get to the remaining balance of the value of the property. In addition, we extended the term of the services out in acknowledgement of the fact that during COVID, development couldn't take place and proceed and services weren't able to be provided as expected. So I talked about the $700,000 purchase price, the $250,000 deposit upon execution of this amendment. We extended out the dates. One of the original services that the Y was going to provide was access to the community, for the community, to the developed playfields. We've removed that because the pressure on the timeline for construction was unachievable, really, in light of current finances and the impact that the pandemic had. Instead, we've replaced that with, the YMCA has agreed to manage and schedule out use of the Bill Heath Sports Complex for the city. And that's a really vital service that the city needs. And it's a wonderful partnership opportunity because the YMCA can utilize that space as well for their camps. And so we thought that that was a better service that actually met the needs of both parties. It'll go through the end of 2024. And there is a provision in the amendment that you'll see that it's a catch-all. It's a true-up process at the end of this. If for whatever reason, the YMCA is unable to give out as many vouchers as they expect to or to schedule out the field for whatever reason, there will be either an extension of the term until the city's paid in full or a monetary payment, like a balloon payment at the end of this, whichever the YMCA chooses. So I'm going to now turn it over to Jenna and Charlie to speak about the modified services. There's a new exhibit to the amendment that's in your packet. It's a chart. And it outlines the type of service and the term of service and then the dollar value that we've placed on it.
Thanks Andrea. So I'll just kind of start at the top and we'll work our way down. And please let me know if there's any questions along the way. So our family membership voucher, I mentioned this a little bit earlier. So we are gonna provide 350 membership vouchers over the span of the agreement. And this will give a family, and a family is defined as what a family comes in to tell us they are. There's no, you know, it doesn't have to be two adults and X kids. It's, it's whoever comes to us in that setting. And so that, that voucher will provide them three months' access to the Y, which will include swim lessons, art classes, physical activity classes, all the programs that the Y offers. These will be distributed by Sumner, Bonnie Lake High School Family Centers, as well as distributed in the Y as we see needed. 350, we believe, is pretty attainable, especially with the needs that we're seeing in our community right now. To date, when I pulled the report Friday, we have served 96 families just in this, what, last 60-plus days. So continuing to serve, worked closely with Ida at the family center and actually have some families that we need to connect with and get them going. This will also be available to our refugee families who come to our community and are needing the support. So for a total of 204,750, which will also waive joining fees, which sometimes can be a very big barrier to families coming in. Jenna? Yes. What about the senior center? Do you contact them too? We do for the senior vouchers, which will be the next one. So next up, yes.
I want to make sure I understand the description. You talk about low-income and refugee families. So is the 350-three-month membership voucher tied to some standard for low income or is that for anybody that wants?
Um, so we use the standard set by the family center. I don't know the exact dollar amount off the top of my head, but if they are meeting the qualification for services needed by the family center, then they qualify for, for the Y one.
Thank you.
All right. So senior membership vouchers. So over the course of the amendment, looking to have 200, we call them active older adult. That's the Y's nice term to use. But senior vouchers, so we have some connections already started with the family center, or sorry, not the family, the senior center to get vouchers to them. And then also looking around our community to other low-income seniors, low-income housing that seniors could take advantage of the vouchers. We do have also some opportunity to explore other pockets, so open to feedback or ideas of, if there's other pockets of seniors that we could serve more who could take advantage of our vouchers. Because we know many seniors are also on insurance that will cover their memberships to the Y too. So, but we feel like our biggest area to serve is in that family voucher membership. And so then the next one below is the shower program for our homeless community members. We know that times are tough and so we want to be there to support folks. And sometimes a shower is the best way to start their day. So Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., showers provided at the Y. We are also gonna work on some communication. We've connected with the police department and they're aware of it as they come in contact with many of those community members and the food bank, as well as churches in the area to let them know of the program. We typically see in the past, the most shower usage coming in the winter months, but are working hard to kind of get the message out there and to be able to serve the community that way. Councilmember Newman.
Yeah, thank you. I'm curious about how, what's really, how many people are taking advantage of those services? And also thank you for working on that outreach for that.
Of the homeless. The, for the homeless showers, we have, to date, have had 27 individuals come in. So we've only been at it for about 60 days. So it's still new to our community.
Jenna, can I make one quick comment? For council who just listened to the services update that Jenna gave before this topic, you might be thinking, well, aren't they already giving that service to our community? Why would it be part of this? And the answer is, there's a huge benefit to our community that they continue to provide that service. And they're under no obligation to do that. So through this agreement now, we've solidified that for at least the next three years, our community will have access to these programs.
Thank you for that. I'm glad it was added.
Thank you. So the Buena Vita Program, I mentioned in the update, that was brought back as a way to, to serve our agreement with this, with the services agreement. But we also feel that this is a really impactful program. We know the Hispanic population in our community might not have access to much, and so we want to show up. We have a staff member, Belin, who is very passionate, Spanish-speaking, dynamite person, who really puts her love into this program and, and has the connections, working closely with the family center to reach out and get those Hispanic families involved. Also with the support of some of the board of directors with the Y, really think that we could serve our community in, you know, we think about culinary, Hispanic food is so important to their culture. It is what brings them together, but it's not always made the healthiest. And so Belin, who's gonna lead this program, really has a passion for, you know, making the tacos still taste good, but cook it a little bit healthier or all the, the wonderful food that the Hispanic population can have. So excited to bring that as part of our agreement and really drive forward the Hispanic population being part of our community. And then lastly, as Andrea mentioned, management of the Bill Heath Sports Complex, we're really excited. We do sports. We're, we're into that stuff. We're pretty good at, at managing fields and games. And so thought that this was And so thought that this was, when this was offered to us, was really kind of a no-brainer for us. And so excited to schedule that, operate it, and then also use it for our camps and programs as well. So excited to dedicate a staff to it, who will be kind of the face of it, involved in the community as well.
Andrea, if I could add to your point. Part of our challenge as an organization has been to add things when we have the resources. So to the point that Andrew was making, those were things we had unfortunately had to discontinue and now we're adding them back. But they were a cost to us because the labor market has been a big challenge, hiring and affording staff, which means affording the services. So we have been very intentional with our commitment to this partnership to extend those services to those in need in the community. I feel like this is a very, very fair partnership. And I feel like Andrea and Jason in particular really worked with what we're, our situation, which was building back. It's not the same Y as we once were. So we're slowly building back. So I appreciate the cooperation on that.
Councilmember Hoxter?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask you about the staff person you're dedicating to that. Can you give me just a little explanation on how you expect? I know you won't know everything yet, but a little bit about how you expect that to work?
Yeah, the program to work or?
How people will know to call to be able to schedule the field? Or will you be in contact with all league sports? Or, you know, do you have some sort of a plan?
Yeah.
So historically, we've contracted with a different third-party company that has scheduled and helped deal with the day-of game issues. So they are no longer providing that service. We're really just switching it over to the Y. We get a lot of calls from the public directly to City Hall asking how they can reserve that field. And now instead of playing hot potato upstairs of who can schedule this field, we can get it directly over to the YMCA, who will provide that service for us. As you know, we don't have any staff members here that are dealing with facility rentals today. So it's kind of always this weird, who's handling it?
And there will be signage. There has historically been signage at the field telling people who to call if they want to reserve. And there will be updated signage to contact the Y.
Any other questions? Councilmember Stewart?
For Andrea, I like the numbers where they come right up to 700,000. What's the plan if there's, if we're hit again with a bit of a pandemic and the services fall? Is it an extension? What are your thoughts there?
We've included, thanks Jason, included a catch-all provision in the amendment that will either extend out the term so that the Y can continue to provide this list of services for a longer period of time until we've met that $700,000 threshold. Or we can sit down, figure out at the end of the term, which is the end of 2024, what remains, what is the delta between what was promised and what has been delivered? And it can result in a cash payment if they no longer want to commit contractually to providing these services. So we do have a provision, a vehicle in the agreement to address that.
All right, any other questions? Thank you. Thank you very much. Now I feel guilty. Now I better go over there and start working out again. Okay, so we will move on to number three, ordinance number 2830. Access, it is accessory dwelling units code update.
Thank you, Mayor. Senior Planner Anne Segantaller will be taking the lead on this. And Anne, I've asked Matt to also join us.
Oh, great. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Hayden, City Council members. Thank you for joining us tonight to talk about accessory dwelling units. We have with us our consultant, Matt Covert from LDC, Inc. LDC has been working with staff on implementing, actually, several of the Housing Action Plan strategies. This is the first one that we've been working on, accessory dwelling units. And we have another one that will be coming up soon with the Planning Commission related to zero-lot line subdivisions. And then we have a couple of other projects related to implementing the Housing Action Plan that we'll be bringing to you. So I'd like to turn it over to Matt, who has a slide presentation to show you with some background. And then we can open it up to questions and discussions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Anne. I will go ahead and share my slides over here. Always a debate over which screen that ends up on. Probably having multiple screens. That's not it. Let me know when you can see it.
We don't see it yet, Matt.
Just a moment.
This is where you start pounding the table and throwing a computer on the floor.
Right. It's, I'm sorely tempted that I will refrain from that. Can you see this?
Yeah, Matt, we can see it.
Hey, great. So thanks, Anne, for the introduction. Thanks again. My name is Matt Covert. I'm a planner with LDC. Been working with City of Summer, first on the Housing Action Plan, and then now on the implementation for a couple of years now. It's been great. This is a really good opportunity to take some of the tools in the Housing Action Plan and operationalize them and use them to better provide diverse housing options in the city. As you mentioned, as Anne mentioned, we had this in front of Planning Commission and we've developed the draft ordinance with their input and with some public input. I'm just gonna give you an overview of sort of why we did this and what exactly, what specifically we did. You all have, I think you all have the draft ordinance and the staff report in your packet. But this is just kind of a broad overview of why we did this and the eight major things that we're recommending be changed here. So this is, this is part and parcel of the implementation of the Housing Action Plan. So, you know, the city got the grant to do the joint plan with the city of Bonnie Lake and that resulted in a number of specific things, specific to the city of Summer and specific to Bonnie Lake and some ways that the cities work together. But each, you know, each city has separate code and different processes. And so we had sort of, for each city, we went through and said, what are some actions and strategies the city could deploy to make progress on housing issues from a variety of fronts? And one of the main ones that we looked at, one of the most, what we thought, one of the most impactful ones that we looked at from a code standpoint is making ADUs a lot easier to build in the city of Summer. You know, we looked at specifics in code of, you know, how things might be barriers in the current code to broader use of accessory dwelling units. And we did a little bit of research and provided some advantages and disadvantages. And we use this to program this into the code update process, which is what we're doing now. To get to the code revision, the specific language that you have in your packets, we started with that, you know, the Housing Action Plan recommendation, and then took a much deeper look in this process at the code, the fee structure, to see where the specific pain points are and more importantly, what, how they could be altered, tweaked, removed, new things added to solve some of these problems and greatly expand where ADUs are feasible to be built. But we didn't just look at the code. We also, we also did a survey through Summer Connects and got a lot of really great responses to that. We used that to draft a memo that kind of outlined our recommended changes and then we incorporated that into the code in draft form and took that to the Planning Commission in June. The survey was really great, actually. Sometimes you never know, you know, how much response you're gonna get. Something can depend on, you know, the weather, it can depend on, you know, other items in the news. But we got a ton of response to this. So we really wanted to take the pulse of resonance on on what they think are the most, you know, the most important things to consider if we were to expand where ADUs could be built. And so there was more than 200 responses, which is a really great response rate for something like this. And a strong majority supported the idea of expanding where ADUs could be built. The other graphics aren't on the page here, but other things we heard loud and clear were that privacy views and parking were the big bugaboos, the sticking points for people. And we actually used some of the specific, you know, the way that we worded the questions and the responses we got to tweak some of the proposed code changes that we had identified. So we looked at both codes and fees, like I mentioned. And we actually found that, you know, Summer's fees are not very high to begin with and they're already reduced by half for ADUs. And that, you know, reducing fees to zero or close to zero, you know, when you're looking at not a large amount to begin with is, doesn't, it doesn't get you tremendous bang for the buck. And it also, you know, deprives the city of revenue for reviewing permits. And, you know, those permits are permanent fees are calculated to, you know, recoup the cost of review. And so we felt like the much, much better bang for the buck was the code changes because there's detached ADUs that simply aren't allowed in most of the city right now. And so that's where the code changes came in. All right, so that's the main thing is we just want to expand where they can be built. But that required looking at a number of different code sections and making sure they all kind of work well together and we're exercising the same points. So that's really the strategy that we took here. So we had eight main areas of recommendations and those are reflected in what you see in your packets. The first one, this is kind of, this was kind of a low-hanging fruit, was that it not necessarily, not necessarily, you know, like a dimensional standard or something that's really easily visible, but it is something that's like, well, you know, this doesn't really make sense in this context. So how can we change it? Was the occupant household limit for ADUs and primary homes, statute, current code prohibits the total number of occupants from exceeding the definition of family, which I believe is defined as five related people in code, which is restrictive and hard to enforce. And so we recommended allowing one family in a primary residence and one family in an ADU with the idea that building code occupancy will dictate how many people could actually live in the ADU and whether it's, whether it's, you know, one person or a small family in an ADU. You know, that's really driven by the building code. We felt that was just an easier way to, and more inclusive way to define this for the purposes of ADU occupancy. Second thing, and now we're getting into more zoning, zoning updates, dimensional updates, is that, and this was the main thing that jumped out at us in the Housing Action Plan, was that currently detached ADUs are only permitted in the LDR 12 zone, city of Summer. Attached are allowed in all, in all the single-family residential zones. But there's some limitations on that we'll get to later. We're recommending, and reflected in the draft code, is to allow detached ADUs down to LDR 6. We left out LDR 4, which is 4,000 square foot lots because the building separation requirements and the very small lot sizes just really don't make it very feasible to build them. And so if it's not going to make a difference, you know, why do it? You can still do attached ADUs. You can still do an ADU in a basement or a small addition if it complied with code in LDR 4. But we just said, let's allow detached all the way down to six. And then we looked at, the next thing is the dimensional issues for that. So these are three sort of just site plan sketches that I drew up that showed current setbacks and dimensional regulations and what we're proposing here. So detached ADUs already have a 15-foot rear setback. And we recommend just making rear setbacks for all ADUs 15 feet, attached and detached. These are just theoretical 6,000-square-foot lots with a typical, you know, a typical modern-sized, single-family home, 35 by 45 feet. And what this really shows is that by reducing that, this middle graph, the middle exhibit here is an attached ADU. So if somebody wanted to build an ADU in addition to the home, currently there'd only be 10 feet between the back of the house and the rear setback line, which is really not enough for a good-sized ADU. If you reduce it to 15 feet, subject to the height restrictions, which I'll get to in a bit, you can really get a decent-sized attached ADU there. Even in this small 6,000-square-foot lot, even if you had wanted to do a detached ADU with minimum fire separation, you could still have a very small detached ADU on this lot. So with this reduced setback for ADUs, or I guess making it consistent across attached and detached, what it really does is give a homeowner some options. You know, it's not, oh, we can only do attached because that's just what works in this, with these dimensional regulations of saying, well, even under the most restrictive conditions for a 6,000-square-foot lot, you could still build technically a small detached ADU. And we think that's a really valuable thing. Number four, this is where we get to those privacy issues. And I mentioned heights and setbacks. So the survey reinforced people's concerns over privacy when it comes to ADUs, which is understandable. We prefer, rather than landscape solutions, we work with the city to come up with some structural solutions that related to height and windows that can, that can mitigate ADU privacy impacts. So the current height limit for detached ADUs is 16, is 16 feet for at roof midpoint for a gabled or slanted roof and 12 feet at the roof for a flat, a flat roof ADU. And we are recommending going to 18 feet for all ADUs, unless it's being created within an existing single-family home without an addition. So, for example, if you, you know, if you had an ADU that was just sort of included in the home, that would potentially be taller than 18 feet. That's okay, the existing footprint of the home. If you're gonna build a new detached or attached ADU, the limit is 18 feet at roof midpoint. The goal here was to allow one-and-a-half-story structures, so something like a loft or an above-garage unit that wasn't the size of a closet, but precludes the ability to do full-two-story structures. People were concerned about that from a privacy standpoint and obviously, you know, we get it. And so we looked at some sample designs and what you'd have to, what you'd have to build to to get a full-two-story ADU. And 18 feet gets you, you know, a little bit higher than what you can currently build, gives you a little more flexibility for those above-garage-type units, but doesn't allow, you'd need a 22 or 23-foot structure for a full-two-story with a roof above it. We also are recommending a revision to the windows code to only allow windows above the first floor to face the front or interior of the lot. And that helps mitigate those if it's along the side setback issue, you know, you know, five or 10 feet from the property line, really helps address those issues where you're not gonna have living space windows anywhere above the first floor that would be mitigated by the presence of a fence anyway. This is an example of this. So this is another little example I drew up that shows a detached ADU on a 6,000-square-foot lot with no windows along the side or rear setbacks, but windows along two other sides. You know, this is just for illustration's sake, just to illustrate the concept. It's got that 15-foot rear setback we were talking about, 12-foot separation from the house, windows on two sides, no windows on the other two sides for privacy reasons, just to show what this could, you know, just an example of what this could look like in practice. The fifth thing we recommended had to do with the size, size of ADUs. So current code, ADUs cannot be smaller than 300 square feet or larger than 800, with the exception of single-story ADUs not in the basement, which is a, the not-in-the-basement thing, I think we struck that in the code revisions because it just doesn't make sense. But the meat of this is that we propose, first of all, removing the minimum size as long as building codes are met. That gives the ability to build like a tiny home on a foundation, for example. Want to be, you know, like, I'm sure you've seen them around. And it would be, you know, a two-building code thing, not on wheels. Uh, and it would be, you know, a build it to building code thing, not on wheels, right? So this is a tiny home built on a foundation. Could potentially be used as, um, as a, an ADU, uh, if you remove that minimum size. Cause three hundred is is much bigger than than most tiny homes. Um, we also proposing to increase the maximum size to a thousand, which is in line with a lot of other communities. Um, and realistically, especially in like LDR six, LDR eight, you're not gonna get a lot of, um. A lot of units larger than the former maximum with eight hundred, um, the only one, once you get up to the larger lots, um, where it's less of an issue. Or would dimensionally, would a thousand square foot ADU be possible, um, just to give a little bit more flexibility. And then, uh, we also propose to retain the size adjustment for single story ADUs, but without that basement clause. Uh, just because i- if somebody wants to put an ADU, um, in a a floor of their house, for example, that's got extra. You know, um, separate entrance and exit from the, from the primary home, uh, you you don't wanna preclude them from using. Um, all of that floor or saying like, oh, it's, it's eight hundred and fifty square feet. It's, uh, you know, you have to not use fifty square feet of that basement for an ADU. So, um, so we we propose to keep that. Um, number six, make it easier to construct an ADU above an existing garage. So, um, this relates relates somewhat to the height limit issue. So, you know, the, um, the current height limit for detached ADUs is sixteen feet for an angled roof, which is, you know, in large, in, um, older homes. You see a lot of small detached or attached garages like this. Um, wanna avoid that two-story issue, but, um. An eighteen foot gives you a little bit more flexibility on that, on that, um, upper story to have more livable space, potentially some, um. Some, uh, gable or some, um, some dormers for extra light if, uh, if needed on the, on the non-side setback side. Um, you know, just, just allows you to, if you're gonna, uh, renovate an existing garage or build a new detached garage, gives you a little bit. Um, more functional of a living space up there, um, than the sixteen foot one, uh, while not allowing the the full two-story garages. Um, relatedly, uh, we we think it's really important to, um, to be able to convert existing accessory structures like garages. Um, but one of the issues is that, is that many of those structures are not the minimum side setback for an ADU. Uh, they could have a really narrow, you know, they have garages or shops can have a three foot setback, um, which is obviously much smaller than what you can get for an ADU. But a- as long as privacy concerns are met, we we wanted to to give homeowners the ability to, to, um. To potentially convert that structure to an ADU, um, you know, even though it's technically too close on the side setback side. So the proposed changes that we made would limit further encroachment into those setbacks and would allow structures built before a certain point in time. I don't know what the the date was that made it into the final code language, but the the goal was to make it so that you couldn't just, um, y- you know. Build a, be building a new garage currently and go, hey, you know what? I'd actually like this to be an ADU. This is really targeted at converting existing structures if you say, um, you you know. Wouldn't bet you value the the addition of an ADU more than the extra parking that you get out of there or the storage, um, you know, just to give people that option. Um, so it allows them to be converted as long as those privacy performance standards in coder met. So, you know, the the no living space windows above the first floor, um, the, uh, the, um, the height limit. So there's, there's the structural elements as well, but this is a, a, a tool to allow conversion of existing structures. That would not be possible under current code. And then lastly, um, reduce the number of required parking spaces for ADUs, so it's not a total. Switch from what what is currently the case now, so current code requires one off-street parking space for a one-bedroom ADU. And two for a two or more bedroom ADU. So the proposed code would standardize this to just one off-street parking space regardless of ADU size. Partially because you don't get, um, y- you you don't get a lot of, um, especially more than two-bedroom ADUs. Um, and second of all, because, uh, this is really, this is really targeted at combined with the the tweak to the code about. Uncovered versus covered parking spaces. Um, this allows you to still, as long as you can prove that you meet, you know, the requirements of the, of the. The main home plus the ADU on the site, um, that you, you wouldn't have to provide two, um, for a, for a, uh, a two-bedroom ADU. Um, if, when it's not needed and you can prove that you've got the parking on site. So this is really driven on, driven by the, you know, um. A lot of cities are saying no parking spaces required for ADUs. We, you know, we talked to the planning commission and it was an issue and the survey, people said it was an issue. So it's like, all right, we're not gonna go to zero. Um, how about if we go to one? And, um, you know, make this tweak to the covered versus uncovered to give some additional site flexibility. Um, and then we also have this element in here of. Um, waiving the off-street parking requirements within a half mile of Summer Station, if on-street parking is available. This is, uh, related to a compliance with the state law that, um, that, uh, doesn't allow you to require. Um, parking spaces for ADUs within a quarter mile of a major transit stop. Um, we did the math on on how many properties that would affect if you did a quarter mile from Summer Station and it's, it's just really not very many. So if the goal of this is to, is to, you know, make some tweaks to incentivize ADUs. We, if you've increased that radius around Summer Station to a half mile, you get, um, a decent number of homes, uh, older homes in the LDR six zone. Just south of downtown. Um, and so we felt like the half, the half mile buffer around that was a a much more suitable option. If the goal is to, as the state law suggests, if the goal is to encourage ADUs. So those are the changes that we propose in the code and the draft code and the staff report reflect those changes. I think there were a couple. Additional, um, changes that that, um, staff and the planning commission worked through after that, after the hearing. Um, Anne and I are happy to answer any questions about that, but that is, that is what I have for you. Please, um, let me know if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you, Matt. Do we have any questions? Any questions? None. Oh.
There's one.
Number Newman. There we go.
Yeah, I have a question about, um, when you cited, well, I think privacy concerns. Uh, especially around the the windows, uh, and the height, were those comments or were those specific questions to the survey? I'm wondering if there was a fraction of the two hundred people responded who actually wrote to that or if those were questions that were asked.
Um, no, the, 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 the way the questions were worded in the survey, I believe, were just, you know, uh, like, like which of the following things do you think are the most. Um, important, um, issues to consider when talking about having more ADUs in backyards. And the thing that floated, one of the things that floated to the top was privacy. Um, the the diff- the distinction between like landscape privacy, like, oh, could you just plant some more trees versus structural stuff that came out. In discussions with the planning commission and staff. We didn't get so specific as to say like, where would you like to have windows or like, you know, would you like this specific window treatment to be applied? It was more like, would, do you think privacy is a concern if we're gonna, if we're gonna restrict, you know, if we're gonna lower side setbacks or rear setbacks? Which of these things are you most concerned about? And people said privacy, um, and views, I think, to a lesser extent, but privacy was the big one.
And so you think when, like, restricting the number of windows, cause I'm just thinking about like natural light, you know, coming in. You think that restricting it is necessary for one story? I do understand for like two, ten-story ADUs. Um, I was just thinking through whether that's actually a, a problem if we're only talking one story.
Yeah, sure. So the, the, um, the, the way the code is written is that only, this would only apply to windows above the first story. So you could have as many, um, you know, first floor windows, just like you would on a, on a, on a single family home. You could have, could have windows in living spaces. Um, the, 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 there's two components to this. So, uh, the first is, um, the limitation on on windows, um, on the, the, the side or the side or the rear. Setback is on living space windows. So that means that if you had like a halted ceiling with, um, that that brought in natural light. And the building was a s- a story and a half tall, so if you, if you had like a, a loft or something, or even just open air and it was a a vaulted window to bring in light. That's totally fine. Um, you can have windows above, uh, that first story on the side setback as long as they aren't living space windows. So if you've got a one-story ADU with a tall ceiling and a a second floor window that lets in light, but nobody lives up, there's no living room or. Or bedroom or something up there, that would be fine. Um, and the other issue is that it's, it's the limitation on windows is only. Um, is only on the, if 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 the ADU is like on the side set, what was it, uh, and is it the fifteen feet of the side of the side property line? Is that what we ended up with?
Yeah, with, within ten feet, and that's a good point, if I could just interject. Matt, that, that what we're trying to do is restrict window coverage for ADUs that are within. Those reduced setbacks already, uh, five feet, ten feet, fifteen feet on the, on the back. So someone could build an ADU that's further back, that's closer to the setbacks of the single family home. And not have to to worry about that window coverage. And the windows do, by allowing windows on. On, it's gonna be at least two sides, uh, for an ADU that does meet the minimum setbacks. That allows cross ventilation is, and as Matt was saying, it's for living space. The, the areas where, uh, people are gonna be spending most of their time during the day. Uh, having windows open, playing, playing TV and so on. So we wanted to limit those really active living spaces. But if it's a bedroom and a bedroom requires a window located there for fire code, building code. Then an owner would be able to build it that way. So we think it's a good balance of privacy, but still allowing a lot of options for. For the homeowner, uh, during construction.
Thank you. If we get, um, a number of, uh. Like, it was, I mean, I imagine that it's gonna be like a slow rolling process. Do we get a number of applicants who? Who, uh, who are hoping to try and do something different that were overly restrictive? Will you just sort of, um, use a study session to give us an update or let us know if this turns out to be a little bit prohibitive?
Please. And I can, I can answer that. I, I think if, if I understand the question, um, I, I believe like. Uh, with all codes, uh, we take our, our best aim at, at writing something that works. And that's why we have a consultant, consultant who's an expert in housing and affordable housing and these types of issues working with us. So we write the best code we can, try to, try to imagine all the different scenarios we we can and, and reduce the barriers. But we never get it a hundred percent right. So, uh, that's part of an iterative process in code writing is we'll see if. If we have people, uh, responding well or coming into the permit center to ask about building ADUs. And they simply can, and it turns out one or two, one or two code requirements are a real barrier. Then we'll probably need to, uh, come back and and revisit this code. But we think this is a pretty good balance and as Matt was saying, a lot of these code provisions we're proposing. Are common to other cities and apparently seem to be working for them. So I hope this is a good balance.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Mary Hayden, may I? Oh, go ahead.
Mister Brown. Go ahead.
All right, um, I don't have a question, I have a comment. And, I. I prefer as many of street parties, um, as possible. So is it a law that? They can't maybe do, I have a street party within a two mile. But if that's a law, I don't know with that, then it's getting it a half a mile. That's my opinion. It's nice to see streets that are fully occupied with public. Um, and I'm not totally in favor of eating, but. I understand the windows. But if I have my house near the street and the neighbor has an engine in the back. And they just have a window facing the front, there's a way there. My privacy is interfered with. So. That's it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Hockstetter.
Matt, can you tell us how far the half a mile goes to in in our city? I need like landmarks. Quarter mile, I realize, would just be in kind of like the really older part of town. But does the half mile bring it out further into newly constructed homes?
Um, I will, I I actually have to do this, um, at the, uh, the, um. High mission study session as well, so I will go ahead and pull up the, um. Pierce County GIS and just throw the, um, the, the radius on there. And I'll just, uh, I'll just do that real quick and get that shared.
Should I ask you that, Ryan? Okay.
So Matt, this is Ryan Windish. I've got it on my screen with.
Okay, perfect, Ryan. Yeah, if you wanna share it, um, that's, that works great as well.
Get our tech figured out.
I just know in those smaller neigh- smaller lot neighborhoods, the parking is at a premium. A lot of the homeowners are already parking on the street.
Perfect, Ryan. Thank you.
Yeah, so what you see in the pink is the town center plan area. And it's a half a mile from a transit center. I may have that just a little bit off there, but you can see that, uh, this is a half a mile. And so it doesn't, doesn't cut real far into the neighborhoods. Um, let me zoom in a little bit. And down this quadrant. So this is Wood Avenue and then you're all the way over here to, uh.
So the circle is the line?
Yeah, the circle's the line, the half mile line. So the quarter mile line, let me show you that first, cause that's probably. Have to redraw that or not. Well, let me redraw it. Starting. Continue with that one. So quarter miles right there. So you're pretty much within. The town center plan area at a quarter mile, which is, you know, a lot of multifamily. Not a lot of single family, not a lot of ADU potential. So when you kind of bring it out to a half a mile. You're, I think, in a more realistic area that could be open to ADUs, you know, this quadrant kind of down through here. Once you get north of Maine, you're into kind of multifamily, so probably not as much interest in ADUs up there. But for the single family neighborhoods down through here, uh, just, you know, trying to get an idea where that's at. Uh, so Park Street, Wood Avenue. Is a pretty major five-way intersection. You probably know where that's at. So then we're dropping down. You know, kind of, it's just an arc there coming down to Silver Street and then curving all the way down to. The very south end of Alder. So, so really what we're talking about in terms of areas that are not going to be, the the proposed to not require off-street parking for an ADU. Is really this, these several blocks in here that are kind of that beyond the the town center plan boundary.
That one's required not to have any, they have to have one onsite park, right?
Yeah, Matt, I might have that wrong, but it, the, the ADU would not be required to have. An off-street, an on-street parking, excuse me, an off-street parking, so they would, they would be allowed to park on the street. They came in and applied for an ADU and they said, hey, we don't have any off-street parking located. Okay, well, you can, yeah, you'll have permission to park on the street in that location.
And they'd still have to get, uh, a permit through the, the RPZ, right, Brian?
Yeah, they would have, if there's an RPZ and then most of these areas have RPZs, we, we, we spread it out pretty far. They would have to get a RPZ permit. So I think there would be, I mean, there would definitely be ample room on the street to park. And I don't, when I drive around town, even during pre-COVID, right, you still had a fair amount of parking. With RPZs, you get a lot of, a lot of capacity on the street. I don't think you're gonna end. You still had a fair amount of parking with RPZs. You got a lot of a lot of capacity on the street. I don't think you're going to end up with a really crowded street if you allow an ADU. To park on the street. In a neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Potato.
So what is a mansard roof?
That is a very particular. Very particular roof style. It's it's sort of a, it's sort of. Louis XIV looking kind of roof, if that if that's evocative for anyone.
Pizza Hut, Pizza Hut's a man's.
Pizza Hut, there you go. That's 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 probably. Probably more more current example. Yeah, so it's the the kind of. It's, you know, the roof line of the first floor, and then there's the little swoop and then another flat. Roof on top.
All right, thank you.
Problem.
Anybody else?
Mayor Hayden, may I just add to that on the the roof structure and type? That directly relates back to the building height. One of the things we considered in establishing that eighteen-foot high, which is. Two feet higher than the sixteen-foot existing height is first, no one builds flat roofs anymore. It's pretty much unheard of. It's a very, you know, difficult construction. Most single-family homeowners are going to have either. A shed type of roof or a gable type roof, something that's pitched. Uh, so so we felt just eliminating these other these other options and going straight to eighteen feet. Whatever your roof style is, it's probably going to be a gabled roof or. Or hipped roof, but but none of the old style mansered roofs or old flat roofs. So hopefully that clarified some of the rationale behind the building height as well.
And I think it's also worth reiterating that the way Sumner measures building height is to the midsection of the of the roof. So the, you know, the the difference, the difference between a. The difference i- in overall building height, you know, depending on the slope of the roof, there may not even. Be much of a measurable difference in building height between a sixteen-foot and an eighteen-foot. It depends on the way that they slope the roof. Uh, but it could give, you know, a couple dozen square feet of billable space that underneath that roof for an ADU that might not otherwise be available. So. It's a it's a a small, a relatively small change in the building. Profile for something that might make the difference between. Being able to get a a full bath and a half bath and an ADU. Uh, which which could, you know, which could make a difference in in livability. So it's just a, it's a small tweak that we think. Will will enable some construction, especially like above existing garages and things that that may not be. Um, some designs are not really doable with a sixteen-foot, a sixteen-foot height limit. So just opening up some options, design options.
Okay, thank you. Jason.
Just to wrap this up, this is scheduled for your consideration at the regular council meeting on August fifteenth. So I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with that. Doesn't have any. Follow-up questions or? Okay, well, we will put this on August fifteenth.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Everyone. Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, moving on to manufacturing.
Hey, Mayor.
There we go. Patrick.
Sorry, I just had one last question there on. It's my anticipation, this is the same ADU bills that have been moving through legislature. So this is something maybe. Imposed on cities in the next couple of years anyway.
Uh, there's no directive yet. If I can go ahead and answer that, Ryan may have something else to add. We we are hearing from the state that we have to address affordable housing. And we have to look at allowing increased numbers of units in our residential neighborhood. So accessory dwelling units is is one of the options. I don't think there's a mandate yet for that. Um, and certainly these types of specific code requirements. That we're proposing are not coming from the state. Those are coming from our work with the consultant and the and the planning commission. So the council has a lot of latitude, you know, in terms of of the amount of parking. Uh, the building height, the windows, the things that we we are trying to use to address privacy concerns. So. It's important for us to hear from the council because we have a lot of room to 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 work with this ADU code. We have ADUs already. Again, uh, but we're just trying to reduce some of the barriers and allow more areas around town to to be able to construct ADUs. As part of their home.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Oh, Councilmember Hockstetter.
Um, Matt, I appreciate your work on this. I think that this is really well thought out and I did read it carefully and I. Think that ADUs is one of the places that it's the best for us to open up. Easy, a little bit less expensive home homes for people. So I think I'm in favor of this.
All right. Do we have any others? Jason, did you have something?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, our last thing is Manufacturing Industrial Center MIC Transit. I assume this will be Ryan.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'm trying to get used to all the tech in the room. So if you see me kind of pushing buttons and. Looking confused, that's what's going on. I'm going to share my screen. And try to get this up properly. All right, that looks that looks good. Okay, well, thank you for having me here tonight. Ryan Windish, your Community Development Director, and I wanted to talk about the potential for. Getting some sort of transit system. To our Manufacturing Industrial Center. And I'll talk in detail about that. My objective tonight, two of them really, one is to present this shuttle program as an option for serving the MIC. And really try to get. City Council's direction on if this is even something staff should even be pursuing. Well, that's really the the main objective tonight. Just a little bit of background. I know most of you have heard all of this before, but the the Sumner Pacific Manufacturing Industrial Center. Is regionally designated by the Pugil Sound Regional Council. It was designated in twenty eighteen. It has something on the order of seventeen thousand employees working in that area. With a growth capacity of another four to five thousand employees as things build out. And as we always like to brag about, we have a lot of big, well-known businesses up there, REI, Amazon, Costco, and some of the lesser well-knowns like Secasui. Aerospace, used to be AIM Aerospace, and many more. This entire area, which honestly is not uncommon in the county, is not served by transit. And when you have that many employees and a lot of these jobs are temporary jobs, and I'll talk about that a little bit. Uh, they re- they rely on transit. They don't have cars, uh, some of the employees. So not having a transit connection really creates a situation where. You have people walking from the Sounder Train Station to their jobs in the North End. And all kinds of weather and all kinds of conditions. And a lot of them are temporary employees, and they're really strict about that. If you're late as a temporary employee, you do not have a job the next day. You may not have a job that day. And for one reason or another, they don't own a car. And my understanding anecdotally from talking to some of the businesses is they have employer employees that are as far away as Spanaway and Parkland. They manage to get themselves, I think, to the Puyallup Station, probably on bus. And then they they make it into the Sumner Station. And again, they're either relying on walking or bicycling to their place of employment. And that's really the the problem we're trying to solve, so to speak. Uh, over the years, we have done, uh, we've attempted to get some grants to look at this. We have been meeting most recently with a company called Bus Up. And they specialize in managing shuttle services. So honestly, some of the slides that I'm presenting comes from Bus Up because they had. Information put together and representing that to us. So in talking about kind of how would this work, it would be what they call a last mile shuttle service. And I, and the loop that I'm showing on the screen. Uh, is pretty logical. You would start down here in the south and you would. Well, one way or the other, you'd make a loop up. I would go up the Central Valley. Uh, one forty-second crossover at twenty-fourth and then come all the way down West Valley Highway. Uh, back to the train station could be one loop through the area. The service would be Monday through Friday. It would be mornings and afternoons. The idea being that it would connect them, connect the employees to this train station. Run about a three-hour service window in there, one loop every thirty minutes. And to begin with, looking at a twelve to fourteen, fifteen passenger vehicle. So one of the smaller shuttle type buses. Uh, probably similar to the Beyond the Borders bus that goes through town now. And you could perform at thirty minutes a loop, six loops and a three-hour shift. And potentially have seventy-two passengers at capacity for an initial initial shuttle. That's kind of the parameters of that. I can tell you that in in the years that we've asked the question. Employers have been interested when we were working on a grant proposal in twenty twenty, we actually got letters of support from some different businesses up there. The company that we're working with has reached out in the past. Uh, we've talked to Amazon about. Fan share and van pool. Uh, Use and Logistics has told me they have temporary employees that. Do exactly what I described in terms of getting to work. REI is interested. LKQ Auto Parts, I spoke with them, exchanged a couple of weeks ago. They would be interested. So we know we have some large employers up there. That are forward-thinking enough and need this service enough that they would be interested in participating. And it would cost the employer six to eight dollars per ride. And they would only have to pay for the number of rides that they actually used. And any kind of excess that would go beyond the cost of the service that if this. The city's cost for the service could go back towards what offset the cost of the service. And I have some numbers. That I'll show you in a second on that. So there's there's large employers out there and there's there's a demand. But I can't tell you is like what the specific number might be. Unfortunately. So talk a little bit about this shared shuttle program and how it works. Bus Up is a company that has the ability to manage a shuttle service with. Multiple different employers and companies using it because they have the technology to be able to do that. And they also are able to manage more than one operator. You were big enough to have more than one operator. You could have operator A and operator B and they're. They're driving shuttles, but they're able to manage that. They would also be the ones procuring. The ridership. And as I mentioned earlier, the Ferris and ridership could go to offset. The costs. And the potential population for service. Might be as high as seventeen thousand, but to be conservative, I have some numbers that drop that down to ten thousand and I'll explain why. The other really cool thing about the program is that is with everything, we have an app that you can use. And a lot of technology that can help with. So once an employer's on board. They would know which employee rode the system, how much it costs. They'd get a printout so they can track ridership very easily. The shared shuttle company can, you know, understand who's riding in real time. They provide twenty-four seven rider support. So if somebody leaves a purse on the bus or a wallet or lose their phone or whatever. The city's not getting the call. The shuttle service is getting a call to manage that. And they can make seat reservations, collect fares all through this. App. So it's it's very much kind of a, I want to say hands-off, but it's very managed by technology. Oh, I missed something on that last slide. Uh, the other really important thing is, uh, the company would be kind of working with us. They would be taking the lead on. Reaching out to corporate corporations and, you know, basically selling this, saying, hey, we have this shuttle service available. Here's what it can do for you. And in talking with this company that Bus Up, they're pretty confident that with. The blue collar type jobs that are out there, that you're going to get, you know, ten to fifteen percent of the people coming to work there might want to take advantage of this system. You know, it kind of comes, and I was thinking about it's like, well, you know, the the companies aren't knocking down our door saying, City of Sumner, you need to solve this problem. Part of that is is people might be solving their own problems, right? They're figuring out how to walk, they're figuring out how to bike. Uh, their girlfriend drops them off, their boyfriend drops them off or whatever. But if they had the option and it made things easier and better for them. They may take the, they may take it. So we don't completely know what what our demand of ridership might be. So again, the pricing structure, the employer would pay six to eight dollars per ride. An employer would pay based on the number of rides. And I already mentioned the fare would be offset. Uh, the city's cost to run the system. And then this company I'm talking about that does the overall management service. Uh, the way they make their money is they would charge ten to twelve percent over. Whatever the agreed-upon amount was for the the operator. So the shuttle operator, they're going to charge you. Ten thousand a month, thirteen thousand a month, whatever it is. And then the management service would take ten or twelve percent over top of that. So here's a couple of scenarios. This this Bus Up company that I'm talking with, they claim that they have a contract that they can be under fairly quickly. At just a kind of rock bottom price of around ten thousand dollars a month per vehicle. For one twelve-passenger van, just to get started and kind of see how this goes. And you'll see on here, I'm estimating ten thousand workers, and that's really just trying to keep things low. Uh, I should also add this is a slide that you don't have in your current packet because I was I was re- rethinking this and making some phone calls. The reason for the ten thousand workers is first of all. Uh, you you saw the loop. The loop doesn't go north of Stewart Road. It doesn't take in every business up there. It also. The 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 big numbers we have out there in the North End are great, but some of those are construction jobs. And the construction people are getting paid out of the out of the office there, but more than likely, they're working offsite someplace else. So there's a reason to be a little more conservative on the numbers and not to oversell this, right? So if you're working with ten thousand employees. And you had five percent of them riding the bus, riding the shuttle, you know, that would be five hundred workers. And then I have kind of some, worst case would be five percent, realistic ten percent. And if you could hit twenty percent, that would be fantastic. So this would be like your initial six-month service at a rock bottom price of around ten thousand dollars per vehicle. And Bus Up is saying, just to kind of get this thing started and see how it works. If we contracted with them, they would not charge us their ten or twelve percent. So this would be kind of. The way you get in and test the waters. And realistically, if you start something for six months, really, you should run it for a year. To really see kind of how things are going. And I can tell you, in the first six months, if it looked like we got zero riders or it was really, really bad. Uh, nobody was interested. Uh, any contract that we enter into, we want to be able to kind of pull out, right? We're like, we're done. Uh, but but look at it at six months, look at it at a year. How are things progressing? Do we have ridership? Are we solving a problem here? Or are we not solving a problem? We're just spending money that's that's not making any sense. So there's kind of the six-month program, super rock bottom. And then more realistically. If we were to program it further out, Bus Up said, well, we we'd have to go out and get. Spending more per vehicle. We'd be wanting our ten percent. Fee on top of that. And so then things things ratchet up in terms of costs. And hopefully, uh, over time, your ridership continues to improve. As you end up with more employees in the area, the service becomes more popular and hopefully easy to use. But it's not likely, well, I don't know if you'd ever really completely break even or not. So. Those are the. The last one is the slide that you have in in your. Your packet already with the seventeen thousand workers, which if, I mean, if you hit even breaking even, that could be pretty. your packet already with the seventeen thousand workers, which if, I mean, if you hit even breaking even, that could be pretty, that would be fantastic. If you had an excess, you could take the extra money and maybe even put it towards additional service. So what are our next steps? Well, like I said, one of the big questions is, is council interested in this at all? Should Sumner be involved in transit at the MIC? And then if the answer seems to be yes, then we could continue to refine some of these costs and kind of figure this out a little bit more. I think it would be important to start at the rock bottom price of around ten thousand per month to explore a pilot project for the first six months. And, and also work it into our, the, the twenty three, twenty four budget for, in order to have money set aside for, for a longer program. And then either do an RFP for service or do a sole source with the company we've been talking to because they seem very unique in actually what they, so those are potential next steps and I'm sure you have a thousand questions.
Okay, Mr. Brown.
Yeah. I didn't realize it was an issue. But if it is, I support it.
Councilmember Potato.
Yeah, I mean, I wholeheartedly support it because I see the number of people coming into town on the bus and using those services and, you know, and then plus if we could get more people off one sixty seven. And, you know, if they see they could come on a, you know, either the bus or train to Sumner and then get out to the industrial area, then I think you could, you know, cut down on some of those riderships. So I think it's a great idea and I, you know, I think it's worth exploring and, you know, because I would think if there really are people, you know, especially temporary workers, that, you know, like you say, if they get their late, they don't have a job and they're the ones that need the job. So I, I think it's a very good idea.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I don't know if anybody knows or cares, but when I was employed, I was a van pool driver for twenty years. It was a van owned by Metro Transit in King County. And the city of Bellevue had a program where they supported the, they gave an incentive to the riders to have them leave their cars at home. It wasn't an issue where you go to the transit center and pick people up. I drove and kept a van at my house and I've seen some vans in the city, private residences. So I, I support the whole concept, but I don't think the city needs to get into business of transportation. What happened to Pierce Transit? I'm just thinking of, okay, Pierce County has got the same kind of infrastructure as King County, I imagine, with Metro Transit. Metro reached out over the years to all the employers on the east side to get their support. And I drove people who weren't employees of the city to and dropped them off, picked them up from their home. So it's a great idea, but I really don't think that the town, little town, little city of Sumner needs to be in the transportation business. That's one less headache because it's a great deal. But what's the benefit for us other than getting people off of one sixty seven, getting them downtown? But it's still, I just think it's, it's a big apple and, and we don't need to take a big bite out of that apple just, just because it's offered. I think that if the businesses want it, let them work with the bus up. Let them get their group together, get a coalition together to organize this. And maybe we could sit at the table as advisors, but putting money in the budget to support temporary employees. That's, I, I don't know. I'm just not sure about that.
Councilmember Newman.
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Potato in terms of it kind of be a win potentially, if it gets used. A win, win, win in terms of benefiting, helping those who aren't using it. Ryan, you may have said it in the beginning, so I apologize if you already said, and I missed it. But what is the minimum contract, period of time for a contract we can enter into? And also what is the plan for promoting the services? I just think, you know, like it takes time for these things to get used and to grow and for people to try. And so I'm wondering, what is the minimum period of time we can enter into a contract? And is there a strategy yet for, for helping build usership for us? But that said, I'm very interested in, in giving this a go and starting some kind of pilot project. And to Councilmember Stewart's, because it's about Pierce Transit, this is, you know, this was always my biggest fight with former Mayor Enzlow. Love him, but it was very short sighted on our part to dissolve somewhat like at that time, our relationship with this transit, which is, I think, part of the reason why we're now shouldering with some of these burdens.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Newman. Let me see. I, I was having a hard, a little hard time hearing your first question. But as far as marketing, we would, we being myself would be helping representatives from, from bus up, connect with the businesses out there in the North End. And I think it's a much more powerful thing to show up and say, we have a pilot project and we have a service that's going to be running and, and have them know that rather than we have this idea or we'd like your letter of support or I, I just think it's a more powerful sell. If we actually have a system, we're committed to making, making happen. I think that's going to be a better. So it would be myself, I would be involved in some of that. And then bus up is, you know, they're vested in trying to make this thing work. So they would also be reaching out and, and marketing it. And the first question you had, I'm sorry, that one got a little bit stumbled.
That's okay. Sorry, that's my Bluetooth. I turned it off. So the first question was, what was the minimum period of time that we can do like a starting contract for the services? Like if we're doing a pilot pro, program, are we obligated to more than one year at a time?
No, we're not. I made that really clear with bus up. If things are crashing and burning that we need to pull out, then we could do that after a year. And have the option extended for another year.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Reed.
I, I'm kind of in agreement with everybody to some degree. So I like the idea of a pilot and to get something off the ground with, I don't want to say city sponsorship, but city encouragement. But I also share Councilmember Stewart's concern about not running the service or being the administrator of the service. You know, in the trial period, in the pilot period, absolutely, that's going to be necessary no matter what, to be heavily involved. But eventually it would need, it would need to be a model that not only could run itself, but potentially be scalable. Is, is this something that we could add a route that goes to Winco? Uh, and circles through town? Are, are there some things there that if it's successful on the North End with industrial, is it scalable on, on the east side? But no, I, I definitely am encouraged by it. I like the idea. I don't necessarily agree with Councilmember Newman on the Pierce Transit. I don't, at the time, today's different, but I, I am still curious, Ryan, were they ever a part of these discussions to become a potential provider of that service or is that part of what they declined?
So a number of different things there, Councilmember Reed, that I can respond to. One, bus up, I didn't, I didn't really want to, I didn't come here to do a sales pitch on them. But I can tell you, they are very strong in Europe. They're making headway in North America. They're one of the largest, they're the largest company that provides this kind of service. And yes, it is scalable. They know and having conversations with them that be, we, I would love to see a east west connection of some sort through town as well. And yeah, all that's scalable. And in terms of management, I mean, the real sell point here is it wouldn't be staff managing this. It would be staff talking to bus up about how it's going, right? So they're the ones contracting with operators, dealing with those headaches, dealing, like I said, with the folks who might leave something or they've got poor customer service or whatever. Those phone calls would not be coming to me. They'd be coming to a representative at bus up. So it's really as much as it can be a kind of a hands off, and maybe I'm being naive, but a hands off situation. And in terms of working with Pierce Transit, the van pool van share is an option for these employers, even though we're not in the district. If your, if your, if your destination or your origination of your trip starts or ends in Pierce County, you have the option to use van pool van share. We've reached out to the companies, tried to get that kind of rolling. I've heard feedback that it's, it's some red tape and X, Y, and Z, why they didn't really pursue that. Okay. So those are, I think I got all your questions.
Yeah, you did. No, that's great. And, and just as far as my input, I, I love the idea for the pilot, especially if it's scalable.
Thank you. Councilmember Cole.
I really like this idea. And I actually, because I'm a sounder rider, I think it would just work perfectly. At six loops, works perfectly with the sounder's schedule. I think it'd be fan, fantastic service to offer. I really truly hope that we do this.
Councilmember Potato.
Do you have any other cities that you know of that you're using bus up? Or do they, are they just, are they in Washington at all?
I, I'd have to check with them. I think, I mean, Jason, do you remember if they had said they were working on another company or a city in?
Maybe, I believe, I don't think in Washington. And part of that is a, the way they explained it, and we've heard this other times. If a city is within a Pierce, within a transit district, they can't operate.
Oh.
So because we're not in a transit district, it allows them to operate.
Okay.
So that, we are very uniquely positioned to do something like this. And we're even more unique that we have the number of jobs that we have that aren't in a transit district. So.
Okay, that helps.
Councilmember Newman.
Thank you. Yeah, um, Ryan, how, how does the billing work in terms of, like, do you have to show employment? So first of all, can non-employees use it? And how do the employers know what their contribution is?
Yeah, so as far as I know, non-employees would not be able to use it because they're contracting with the employers. And then it's an app, right? So I'm, I work for Amazon. I'm an employee. I sign in, I reserve my seat and I, you know, basically it gets billed back to Amazon. So they have it set up so they can go in and say, oh, Amazon, here's your number of riders for the month. You owe us this. So REI, you had this many rides this month, you owe us this. So they, they really got it dialed in according to their presentation with the technology to be able to separate out those employers, their employees and bill them correctly and show them a statement every month.
Okay. And then, and there is also, i- if, if this does get used in the way that we hope, there is actually potentially the opportunity for the city to make money on this. I'm, I'm going back to like your a hundred and twenty percent.
Yeah, if it's a, it's a booming business, so to speak. Those dollars are coming in that exceed the cost that we're paying to run it would be off, would offset. And then if it was positive, that would be, the way, the way it's been described to me is it would offset basically the cost for the next month, which is kind of interesting, but there would be a savings there.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hoxter, did you have something?
Yeah, um, when I first read this, I thought the six to eight dollars was the employee's job to pay. But you're saying the employer covers that for them.
That the employer would have the option to like ha, go, go half with the employee. They might say, we'll cover half of it. You'll need to pay still three dollars a ride or, or they could cover all of it. It's going to be up to the employer to kind of decide.
Oh, so that's something they, they set up with, at each business? And also, I guess this is just sort of asking you opinion, but people are, businesses are having such a hard time getting employees now. Do you think that this might be a way to help keep our MIC healthy with getting people back to work? And people who could not otherwise maybe be employed and we would be able to get them to our area to begin working?
Yeah, I think there's two things going on. One is employers of over a hundred employees have to be, by state law, have a commute trip reduction program. So there's some incentive for them to figure out how to reduce single occupancy vehicles on the road and make it easier for their employees to get to work. So there's that. And then I, I, I believe it would be a sell point. It's like, hey, we're recruiting people and now we're not just recruiting people who can drive a car to work. We're recruiting people because we have some reliable transit that we can actually market and show that you can get here without having a job and realizing all of a sudden I have to ride a bike from Sounder Station to the, to my place of employment. So, or walk. So yes, I think it would be a sell point, a, a marketing point for any employer in the North End.
Just want to add that, you know, we talk about people coming in on the sounder, but there's also sound transit buses that regularly, every thirty minutes show up at our station. And this would also be available to folks that maybe live out by Fred Meyer that walk to our station and then ride this up to their place of employment. So there are lots of opportunities here.
All right. Thank you, guys. So when does this come back?
Well, honestly, we didn't know what you were going to think about it. So we will be going back and we do have some funds available in Ryan's budget that could start the pilot project. We need to work through the procurement. We believe they, they meet the definition of sole source, but we need to do some more follow up on that. And then we'll be bringing it back to you for final action. And we can bring it to committee first, update you on, on where we're at. Maybe at the end of August, go to CD Committee, is what I'm thinking. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. City Administrator Report.
Just one quick reminder, this weekend, instead of the Music Off Main being on Friday night, it's actually on Saturday with the Chalk Art Festival and it's at Loyalty Park. So if you're interested, come out to the chalk art beforehand and concert starts at six thirty. Thank you. That's it.
Council meeting agenda. Councilmember Potato.
Yeah, I won't be able to go to Finance Committee on the third.
And who's the?
I've been recruited.
Okay, are you in? Okay, Councilmember. Councilmember Hoxter.
This week at the CD Committee, I will be late or maybe not attending. And I have a notified Councilmember Newman to start the meeting and chair it for me. And I don't know who the alternate is.
Okay.
It's Pat.
Oh, it's Pat, okay.
Is it possible for you to come, Pat?
Yeah, so what is that date again?
It's this Wednesday.
Um, yes, I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Newman.
Yeah, Mayor, I think, I told you this last week, but just so everyone knows for the record, I won't be able to make it to council on Monday, August fifth. I will be in the air on an airplane and I don't trust the wifi enough to try and do that one from my seat. Plus, I don't think any of my fellow passengers want to hear me.
Councilmember Newman, the, the first and the eighth are the meetings.
I meant the first, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have no, oh, Councilmember Brown.
Yeah. I will never admit it to admit words on Tuesday the second. Yeah.
I am the alternate, but I have, gonna have a house full of people, so.
We can meet with two, yeah.
Cindy said she could attend.
Okay. That work?
But tell me the exact day again, please.
Tuesday the second.
Four.
Four thirty.
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock.
Okay, wow. That it? Seeing no more than no executive session, we are adjourned.
Have a good night.